All right, we are live, so we are going to open this session of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for October 17th, 2022, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. All right, first up, we got manifests, so I'll take a motion.
I have not, I've been having issues getting in to see my emails and all that for the past week, so I am trying to work it out with Bay, who's that?
Bay Ring?
Yeah, Bay Ring.
Back Bay.
Back Bay, thank you.
Back Bay?
So hopefully that'll be rectified this week, so I have not had an opportunity to look at any of the emails and manifests or anything like that.
Okay, so, all right, so we're gonna have to table that until next time.
Well, you can do it with two votes. If John seconds, you make the motion, you can pass it.
Yeah, but you have to have a quorum's worth of people voting on it, and he hasn't seen it.
Yeah, quorum is present, now you need a majority of those who are present.
Me and you are gonna vote on it.
You can vote on it, Tony.
With the two votes, two out of three.
Okay. All right, well then, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest for October 17th, 22, and the payroll for October 18th, 2022.
Okay, and I'll second it. There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, there we go. The ayes have it. All right, and minutes.
I'll make a motion, I'm also with the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't have any, what's that?
I didn't have any.
You haven't seen them?
No.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Nottingham Select Board of October 3rd, 2022.
And I'll second them, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Minutes are approved. Okay. Put that there. All right, next up, reports from assigned boards and committees. Uh, budget?
I wasn't able to make the last budget meeting, but they was talk certain things in setting the schedule, which we have in front of us now, for the upcoming meetings, uh, starting on November 3rd. Looks like we'll be meeting every single week on Thursday night. And so we'll see how it all goes once we get all the reports from staff and departments.
Okay. All right, uh, planning board.
We had a long meeting on Wednesday night, last Wednesday, a lot of cases, um, that are going on, it's busy, they're still busy. Um, as you know that we are losing our administrative, um, for that board, uh, so something we'll talk about later. I think here we have until the end of this month. So, but there was three cases, those couple cases postponed, but then we actually went over and talked about stuff on the budget, but I'm sure we'll see tonight.
Okay. All right, uh, CIP, that Donna's been attending those, right? CIP?
That's Tyler.
Oh, it was Tyler?
Yeah.
All right. Have you heard, uh, John, have you heard anything from CIP committee at all?
Um, I have a spreadsheet here from the CIP, but I'm not sure how recent it was.
Okay, do you know, have they met yet?
I do not know if they've met. I'm guessing this is an older one, because it has 2022 on it.
Yeah, it's the one we did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been using it for budget purposes for what they projected onto 2023.
Yeah.
But I have not heard from a newer report.
Okay. Yeah, the new, the updated CIP plan will be there, deliverable to have ready by the end of January, prior to the next election. So that, that's what they'll be working on in the, over the next, uh, three months.
So 23 is now in the hands of the Select Board and the Budget Committee, from this report, that, the last report they did.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, 300 in Marston, Donna's not here, but Steve, you got anything you wanna?
A lot of things going on. Number one, that Marston has been paved, which is kind of neat, and we'll be soon, we'll be putting markers for parking there, which will mean we'll be able to accommodate more cars. There's also plans with the Highway Department to put signs up saying, as a ball field, the heads slow down. Now, for the 300, we've had a really exciting weekend with a tour of the Silly Cemetery on Saturday, and a fantastic ballgame, played by 1864 rules here at the field. Coming up, it will be the Chandra on the 29th, the Chandra, uh, fire bombing.
Very good, thank you. All right, any questions on any of that?
I was at both of those things this weekend, it was nice.
Yeah?
Yep.
Did they wear the old uniforms too, or did they just use, really?
Yeah, yeah, there was a team from Maine called the Durangels, which was a stick, they're from all of Maine, and they play in uniform with a big D, like Jennifer with Detroit, but it was the Durangels, and they really got enthusiastic. Now, one of the interesting rules of 1864 baseball is if you missed a pop-up or a fly ball, if you caught it on the first bounce, it still was out. And they also didn't wear gloves, and there was no pitching mound, so it was kind of fun to watch. And they had, they didn't keep score, but they had a lot of fun.
Well, that's good, that's good, and was there a good amount of people there?
Never as many as we'd like.
Yeah.
But it was there, we do a lousy job of getting people to these events, but we keep working on it.
All righty. Thanks for that update. All right, let's see, that's next, all right, town administrator report.
Health insurance rates came in, they're up approximately 11%. Primex rates came in, two of them dropped, one went up, so the net change is an increase of, uh, three or $4,000. So, um, I have for approval the non-public minutes of 9:12 and 10:03. Do you want to see them in non-public before we approve them?
Yeah.
Uh, the preliminary budget is available, and tonight we have police, um, the supervisors of the checklist, and recreation, fire will not be presenting tonight. Uh, library, highway, the facility committee have been invited for 10:31, and I'll probably add fire to that if we can schedule it. Uh, the list for NHMA legal advice does not have my name on it, it has Chris's name, so I would request that the, um, board authorize a change so that my name is on there, so I can contact them for the free legal advice that they give.
Is there a process for that, or?
If you just make a motion, we'll drop the letter and have somebody sign it. In other words, make a motion to add my name to the list and take Chris's off.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, update the NHMA contact list to take Chris's name off and add John's.
Second.
Make a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, the ayes have it.
Um, I take it, you have a lot of names on there, I have some towns where there's as few as one name on it, or, um, but this hasn't been a problem, I assume, with different people?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm pretty sure, like, the, the chairs of the various boards and committees, you know, are...
I think all the Budget Committee members are listed, so I'm wondering if it should be just the chair, but...
Should be.
Should, yeah, should be.
So you want to update it to make it just the chair?
I don't know why, I didn't, but I saw that today.
I mean, we can go over the full list and just add or remove who we...
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can do that.
The, um, NHM, I mean, Nottingham does not pay dues to Stratford Regional Planning Commission, we're one of only two towns that don't pay dues. We get services from them at the rate of those who are members. Why this came up is, one of the Nottingham reps doesn't feel it makes any sense to go if he can't vote and can't participate, uh, at the meetings. I have put the number in the budget, but it will be a decision as you go through the budgets as to whether or not you want to join, um, Stratford Regional, uh, they do provide valuable service. It would seem to be fair to the other towns if Nottingham participated, but it's in the budget, it'll come up in discussion as part of the budget process.
That was discussed at the Planning Board meeting.
Uh, what was the Planning Board's opinion?
Uh, would they like to see us fund, be funded into it?
Yep.
Uh, we for years never been, I was on the Planning Board long before, and we've never paid into it, and we've always used the services, and this, this subject has come up before. But now with the fact of all the bigger developments and stuff, we're really relying on them to, because of all the zoning regulations and everything like this, um, and all the new plans and everything, that's, goes on a big subdivision, we've been using them.
Yeah, you save money that you would otherwise be paying for an engineering firm to do your uh, plan review.
So...
Next item, Birch Tree Lane, uh, a 48-inch culvert has collapsed. Uh, the bad news is coming in by trickles, but it looks like $40,000 to $50,000 to fix the whole thing. We're going to need to get an emergency waiver for wetlands. There is a fairly extensive drainage, uh, area that it feeds into it, so we're gonna have to put at least two 48-inch culverts in to replace the one that went out. The idea would be to put a box culvert in, but all the concrete places, you won't get a box culvert until next summer, and there's a feller in there with his house jacked up and can't get to it, because, I mean, can't get there with the concrete trucks. The concrete forms are there, uh, that may explain why the culvert is having problems, you know, but they can't get the cement trucks in. So, we don't know how long it will take, or even if we can find, um, a, a construction company to come in, we can't do it ourselves. It's going to require dewatering, uh, pumping, um, it's gonna require us installing temporary walls, uh, it's a fairly extensive process. I, I think the town should be aware that all those camp roads they accepted are probably gonna cost you several hundred thousand dollars over the next few years, um, because of maintenance that's going to be necessary just to keep it to a town standard.
Sorry, what, what was that road again, that the culvert collapsed on?
Uh, it's now called Birch Tree Lane, it's one of the newly renamed one. I'm trying to think of what the old name was, I can't remember right now. It was renamed, there's like one permanent...
North River?
North River.
North River.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we put a two-ton limit on it temporarily, although, you know, obviously the three-ton ambulants can go across it, they can put their fire vehicle, but they can't take a loaded fire truck over it, you can't put a, uh, you know, they plow that with the one ton, so they might be able to put the one ton over it, but it's gonna be a problem. We've put plating down, and we may need to get more large metal plates to put on to try to, uh, allow for access in there through the winter, if we can't get it fixed this fall. Uh, it's also holding up the state, the state has a dam that they want to draw down three feet, and they've started the first foot, so they've got a couple of feet to go. They had wanted to take all three feet at once and just let it really wash through, if they'd done that, the whole road would have been gone. Uh, so it's a, um, uh, it, I talked today with, um, I think it was Chris Albert, the wetland specialist, who is working on the emergency permit that we're going to need, uh, it, because there are a lot of wetlands issues, uh, so, uh, we're trying to get prices on it, but, uh, that's where we're at right now. I think we're gonna have to look at using either ARPA money or the unanticipated bridge money from the state towards doing this, certainly it's not something we have within the budget. But, as I say, those roads that were accepted this spring, and I think maybe one or two last year, those camp roads are gonna be very expensive for the town, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So, John, do we have the criteria and where, how we can use the ARPA funds? The federal government finally, I know, this is something I've asked Chris several times, and he says that the, the federal government was vague on.
Yeah, it, it, um, I, I do not know for sure, I have not seen anything definite, but I will check on that. Last I knew it was still pretty vague, but...
Because, I mean, if we have a situation like that, we've got other culverts in town too that are in dire need of repair, that could, we could use those funds for, even the, uh, highway funds.
Yeah, you've got, um, uh, you, 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 you have engineering money that you need, there's three big, there's three big culverts you've gotta do, not counting these that arise like this unexpectedly, but the three that you've gotta do, you're looking at perhaps a million dollars in construction, as well as 100,000 in engineering, so, uh, the ARPA money isn't going to go very far on those three. Uh, but, uh, the, Sean's suggestion, and I fully agree with him, get everything engineered so they're shovel-ready, and then try to see if you can get any of that infrastructure money that came through the bill that was passed, you know, by Congress earlier this year. I know when I was in city manager in Rochester, we had some shovel-ready projects, and that was when money became available for shovel-ready projects, and we just went right to the head of the line and said, we need this water treatment plant, we need this new water line constructed, and something else, and we get, you know, well over a million dollars.
What would it cost us to, to, you say 100,000, you think it would cost us for the engineering?
Uh, I, I hesitate, it, it's gonna be in the magnitude of 50 to 100,000. Uh, Sean is supposed to have those numbers for the, um, you know, as we, as we go forward in the budget number. I've seen them, he showed them to me, but I just don't remember them.
Okay.
Um, oh, I'm not done yet, but anymore on the, anymore on the culvert?
Yeah, I was just curious, what, what collapsed it? What, what was the, it didn't just...
Rottaway, I mean, these are metal culverts that age, um, and, um, you know, just water rots away the culverts over time.
Right, right, but like, was, you know...
We think it was a heavy truck going over it, but we can't prove anything.
Okay.
They went in there, they put the forms in for the concrete trucks to come, and then they found out the culvert was collapsed. So the timing is suspicious, but because of the state of the condition of the culvert, you're not gonna get any money from the company, I don't think. That was my first thought.
Yeah, I mean, if they exceeded the weight rating of the culvert to begin with, you know...
Uh, there was probably no posted weight limit on it, it probably wasn't, I know the bridges get posted E2.
Yeah.
But I don't think the culvert, the state...
Tony, wasn't this something that the highway was supposed to put up?
I don't know, for the bridges, for sure, but the culverts, yeah, culverts, I don't, I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah, the bridges are supposed to all get E2, which is a special, special weight, but, uh, usually culverts, uh, the state is not as, um, concerned with your posting for anything under 10 feet. And, you know, in width or opening, you know. Uh, the last thing I had, there is a small dent now in the front wheel well of the rec bus, but given its age, uh, all we're gonna try to do is just put something on it to keep it from rusting, and it's not very noticeable, and it doesn't, it's not worth fixing, I don't think, for the difference in the value of a old vehicle. As far as I know, I've been asked what my office hours will be, and it's gonna vary somewhat, but this week I plan to be here Wednesday afternoon and most of Thursday. I may be in Friday morning, I don't know for sure, but I plan to be here Wednesday afternoon and Thursday. Next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, I plan to be here most of the day, and probably I'll be in Friday, because I have to approve payroll. So, um, next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and this week, Wednesday afternoon and Thursday, perhaps Friday morning, I, I'll know better as the week goes on. And that's my report.
Any questions for, for John? No? All right.
No, this is just, no, stuff that we already went through, trying to keep it self.
All right, we are, we're about 10 minutes ahead of schedule, do we just want to move right into our first appointment?
If they're all here.
Yeah. So, um, Deanna, are you ready to go? Would you mind going a few minutes early?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, George.
Yeah.
I'm asleep over here.
You're the only, you're the only Deanna here, so...
Well, she's coming from the supermarket.
For PLIA.
You're, you're here for the check, you're supermarket.
I'm here for the checklist.
Right.
He's here for the PLIA.
Oh, okay.
Is that really?
All right, sorry, I'm sorry.
Hey, she's here, she's here basically to answer any questions you have on the election rec, budget or second.
Gotcha, all right.
Yeah, we already got one.
Yeah, we've, we've got, we've got some.
Way ahead of ya.
Oh, no, not that. Steve said that, that's not what I'm talking about. Well, it is, sorry.
This is, uh, this is pretty big, so...
I talked to him.
Okay.
Well, he is going early.
Yeah, I'm early, I'm on ya.
What's that? Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm Neil Santos, 63 Shore Drive, uh, I've been here before, but I want to talk about the status of milfoil on Tuckaway Lake, estimate some significant changes, uh, over the past year. So, I know some of you have seen some of this before, uh, milfoil's been in the lake for eight years, uh, we started pulling it out in 2015, we now have it in 16 areas on our lake. Page three, uh, the team is, we have seven search divers, 16 support kayakers, two to three searches per dive this year. We had six certified divers who could pull milfoil last year, volunteers, we only have really two this year. That's been a big problem for us. We did, uh, 59 dives this year, searching and pulling, and it's been all volunteer project until this year. We did 688 hours last year, 921, I mean, two years ago, 921 last year, 832 hours and counting this year. We're still diving, still pulling milfoil, and that doesn't include volunteer time for either lake hosts or weed watchers, which are two other very important programs. If you look on page four, you can see in 2017, uh, we only had milfoil in a small area between Horse Island and the mainland, it's what we call the South Channel, that's where it originally started out, and we thought it would probably contain to that area. In page five, in 2018, it expanded not only up and down that channel, but you see how it jumped over on the right, that's Gove's Cove? So the milfoil all of a sudden, instead of spreading, jumped, and that's been a big problem, it fragments, it floats, it sinks, it spreads. In 2019, it spread to that small cove in, on page six, it spread to that small cove between the two other red areas, Little Cahill Cove, I'll bring that up later, because that's been a significant issue. Very small cove, but we found milfoil in that little cove. In 2020, it not only jumped in, on the right-hand side of your page, to, uh, both ends of Gove's Cove on the right-hand side, but also down at the bottom of your page into Tuckaway Shores. So it moved around the lake. And then in 2021, next page, you can see what happened. Now, instead of just three or four areas, if you see all the small red areas to the left, every single cove in the south end of the lake, that's some milfoil in it. And if you notice that area, the upper top where it says Neil's Cove, if you see that, just to the right of that, at Little Square, that's the State Park, a new rental area. We found in that little tiny area, 65 gallons of milfoil in 2021, never before seen, we found it there. And of course, you know, to quote Donald Rumsfeld, we don't know what we don't know. So when we find these areas, they could have been growing for a long time, it's just areas we haven't searched, and all of a sudden we discover it, and it can be a big problem. Also note that on the inside, Drowns Dam and Dyke, at the top, north end of the lake, that's the Drowns Dam and the Drowns Dyke, Dyke on the right side, milfoil was found in both areas in 2021. Not much, but some. I look at 2022, the circled areas are new, new milfoil areas, and where there've been significant amounts of quantity, I've denoted how many gallons we found in those areas. 109 gallons in the South Channel, that big area in the middle, on the right-hand side, Gove's Cove, 110 gallons, and then that little cove between those two points, 162 gallons and counting in that little tiny area. We thought, we, we sent some divers in to do the inside of the cove, to pull some milfoil out of there, they parked their boat outside the mouth of the cove and dove down, ran through a forest of milfoil, and pulled 100 gallons of milfoil in that one day. Also note, Town Beach area, uh, milfoil was spotted a couple months ago, right off the Town Beach, and as of yesterday, more milfoil was found in that cove, just, there's a little aisle in there, and it was somewhat south of this area that I've circled, is more milfoil. That's an area we're gonna have to search next year, because obviously there's milfoil up in that area, and that's another area we have to, we'll have to search. And if you count up those three areas that I put the gallons on, you know, that's 360 gallons, 70 gallons, that's about 90% of the total in the lake, and the rest were relatively small, but again, that's all we know about, there could be more and more areas. So, what do we do? How do we do this? On page 10, we're primarily dependent on the underwater searches, divers under the water, our divers can search about one acre per hour per diver, we're searching about 70 acres, so that's 70 man-hours per search, and we try to search areas one to three times per season, depending on, you know, how extensive they are, how much traffic is in that area, what we've found before, and so forth. So, there are about 450 acres of the lake that could have milfoil based on the depth of the lake, but still, even at 70 acres, now more than that for next year, because we've gotta search the Town Beach Cove, it's probably gonna be 80 or 90 areas we have to search, so it's growing. Uh, even though we search underwater, uh, visibility's limited three to five feet because of turbulence in the water and other factors, so even when we search, we only find maybe, only see maybe 50 to 75% of the area we're searching, so we don't find 100% of what we're looking for. Last year, or this year, excuse me, we spent more time searching than extracting. It used to be a 10 to 1 ratio, 10 hours of searching for one hour pulling. You look now, 213 hours searching, 165, excuse me, 165 hours extracting. So, as the milfoil gets more extensive, we don't have to look as hard, we're finding more, and we need more resources to pull it out. And as I said earlier in the presentation, we had six weed-controlled divers last year, only two this year, so we're getting taxed. Um, and, uh, we only can search in underwater a certain amount of area, 70 acres this year, so we need the weed watchers, by surface observation, to monitor areas that we, where we don't know there's milfoil, that, where there may be milfoil. Besides diving, we use aerial drones, uh, we tried that last year, you can see in the pictures on the left-hand side, there's two white dots, that's milfoil, take it from the air, and on the right, I've circled the milfoil. We thought this was gonna be a good panacea to find milfoil, but it's really only good in the spring, right after ice out, when the water level is down, and the plants are kind of splayed out, and there's not much water on top of the plants. We also use sonar, I've marked here some sonar scans and showing you, uh, what milfoil looks like on the sonar. It does find big plants early in the year when there isn't much native vegetation, uh, there are some false positives, because we can't discriminate between milfoil and perhaps some other big underwater plants, but we do use that as well to search large areas where we don't know there's milfoil. On page 13, uh, we used a new technique this year, uh, based on some information from Sun Cook Lakes, and, uh, built a light bar, which is mounted, that's my pontoon boat, which we lower into the water, it's a bright light like you see on top of ATVs, and we lower it in the water at night, and it lights up the milfoil pretty well, we, we locate it right over the weed bed and skim over it, and we can see the milfoil, we drop a marker and so forth. It, it's about three times faster than diving, but we can't see the small plants, and of course, small plants grow to be big plants, so it's not 100% search solution for us, but it's a good way of finding out maybe how big the infestation is in a given area. Uh, as far as, that's for finding, as far as removal goes, uh, we have to extract with the state-certified weed-control divers. As far as removal goes, we have to extract with state-certified weed-control divers. As I've said already, we had six last year, only two this year doing a lot of the removal. We have four, but only two are doing 90% of the work. And for the first time this year, we had to pay divers to extract milfoil. We had 26 paid hours this year versus 139 volunteer hours for extraction. So we still have a lot of volunteers, and some of our paid divers volunteer as well. Most of their hours are volunteer. But when we ask them, we have an emergency, and we ask them to come in and spend a whole day diving so they'd be away from their work, we feel it's only, you know, it's our obligation to pay them for losing a day's worth of paid, and pay them for their work. But so far, it's only been 26 hours year-to-date. We, so far, we don't need more extreme measures. We're kind of holding the fort, if you will. We don't need more things like Dash, which I think some of you know about from my presentation last year. It's a suction harvester from the surface. Divers still have to go down and pull the plants, but rather than bag them, the Dash pulls them up to the surface, so it's more productive. Or herbicides. So not yet, and I put yet in parentheses. You know, as you can see, the problem's growing, and our resources are limited. So we may need to do more than just dive next year. On page 15, you can see our gallon total by year. Last year, it was 316 gallons. This year, this is 417. This is, I printed this last Wednesday. It's now up to 428 gallons, and the divers are still diving this week. So it's probably going to end the year at about maybe 440 gallons. So that's like a 33% increase year over year. You know, if it continues growing at that rate, you can see what we're facing. I don't know if it will, but we see more areas all the time. There's been questions about what we do about managing costs, and this is kind of an overview of what we've done. It's largely volunteer. All the divers pay for their own gear, which can go up to a couple thousand dollars per diver, for scuba divers. We did purchase a hooker a few years ago, which I got a grant for. We got a grant for purchasing the sonar in 2020. We paid for some scuba tanks for, out of PLIA funds, for divers. We purchased a second hooker out of PLIA funds in 2021. I built the light bar this year, a couple hundred bucks. We had to pay contract divers $1,300 this year, first time we've had to pay divers, as I mentioned. And we have annual expenses, divers insurance, and miscellaneous equipment. And we also have noncash donations, so from batteries, tank fills by the Nottingham Fire Department, and diver equipment's paid by volunteers. So we try to look for all the sources we can to try to keep the cost down. We go for grants, and as you'll see later on in this presentation, we're going for a DES grant next year. But now, we try what we can to keep the costs limited, and we've done pretty well so far, but the need is growing. On page 17, we've got a lot of stakeholders on the lake. You know, we've got you folks, the town, PLIA, the lake residents, DES, Fish and Games, State Parks, and there are probably some others. But we try to keep everybody informed of where things are going. I talk to the supervisor of the state park every year and tell them where we're going. And obviously, I'm here talking to you as well. So we try to keep everyone apprised of how things are going on the lake. Plans on page 18, excuse me. We continue to use our divers to search from May to October to remove, search and remove milfoil. We continue using drones and sonar and light bars for searching, try to get new team members. We have applied for a DES grant for 2023. That's the first time we've applied for a DES grant. We've got our preliminary grant in for it. DES will come in next year and do some surveys based on the amount of funds they get, the amount of requests they get from the 800 lakes in New Hampshire. And our need, they will make some determinations as to whether we deserve any grant money or not. They may say, "You guys are doing okay, you don't need any money." They may say, "We don't have any money to give you." Or they may say, "You've got a big problem. We'll pay for some divers, we'll pay for Dash, we'll pay for some herbicides." But that's TBD, we won't know until sometime in the spring of next year, whether DES will say we need any money and will have any money to give us. And the summary, you've probably already gathered, the milfoil spreading to more locations despite our best efforts. The amounts are up by 33% year over year. We had two dense areas of milfoil in 2021 and two in 2022. What do I mean, dense areas? What I mean are areas that are thick enough so that it could warrant more than divers' hand-pulling. It could warrant a Dash, it could warrant herbicides. The areas have been small but dense. So if we, if those areas start to grow, or we find more dense areas, we would have to consider additional means other than what we, our resources allow, which could mean paying more divers, could mean herbicides, could mean Dash, whatever. So the demands, I think, are slowly outstripping our volunteer capabilities. And even though the divers and the milfoil team is what I'm talking about here, there are two critical items here. Weed watchers to find new areas of milfoil, and lake hosts, which are critical in keeping more invasives out of the lake. Dollar for dollar, lake hosts pay 1,000 times over. Every fine they have of invasive that goes into the lake probably saves us 1,000 hours of volunteer time finding an invasive. And by the way, if you think milfoil's bad, there are a ton of other invasives which would come to this lake, which are in lakes not far away. If they get into this lake, that's going to be a lot worse than the problem we have now. There's fanwort and hydrilla, and spiny pond weed, and brittle naiad, and a ton of others. So lake hosts, I know we come to you for funds every year to help with lake hosts, and they pay dividends. Every dollar you can give pays, pays, pays well in terms of the lake preservation. So that's where we are. We're still at the numbers I've said and counting. The numbers are actually a little bit bigger than what I put here because I printed this Wednesday, and we've had a couple of dives since then. So the numbers are a little bit worse than what you see on the page, but this gives you a good idea where we stand right now in terms of milfoil in the lake.
Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure. Thank you for all the work on the subject. A lot of work there.
It's not only putting this together, that's the easy part, it's pulling the milfoil out.
Yeah. So I got a quick question for you, actually. So at one of your previous presentations, there was, you know, there was a discussion about putting a line item in the budget.
Yep.
And we had recommended, if I remember correctly, putting it in as a warrant article, right? Because we're under a tax cap now, and we have to be mindful of pushing up the, you know, the bottom line of the budget from year to year. We're under a four, it's a 4% cap? Is that, yeah? So is that, are you still intending to proceed with that warrant article?
Yes.
Yeah?
And by the way, I said in this presentation that we spent $1,300 of PLIA funds this year for divers. There was some discussion amongst the PLIA, do we, should we come to the town at this point and say, you know, that's a significant amount of money, you know, should we ask you for some of the funds that you put in reserve? And I think the decision has been no, but it just shows you that we're getting to the point where we're going to start coming to the town and saying, "We need help, financial help." So, yeah.
Yeah. Well, this, this is definitely, you know, good material because it illustrates, you know, all the work that's going on, so that, it informs that choice.
And I do want to point out that, you know, we're doing everything we can to not just come to the town and say, "Help us, we're looking for funds wherever we can, not only at the PLIA, but also from the state as well."
Right.
So we're trying to keep that as minimal as we can.
Yeah.
And we put in, you know, 900 hours of volunteer time, so if we had to depend, like some lakes do, on paid people to do all this, the numbers would be staggering.
Also, you know, I would encourage all the board members, come spring when they start ramping up again, to go out there when they're out there doing that. It's quite different to sit in here and listen to what they have to say than go out there and physically see what's happening, all the areas that are marked off. I mean, you can look at a map, but until you get out there, like Neil was gracious enough to bring me out there so I could just kind of get a bird's-eye view of what's, what's happening. It's quite an operation they got going over there. You know, I tip my hat to you guys that are just out there, day in, day out, trying to fight this. My concern here is that you are probably at a point now where you're, you're exhausting your efforts and you're not making any headway.
Yeah.
This is where I would stress, and I know you guys are doing this, is to really start harping on the state because they own the largest part of the shorefront on that lake, and they really should be contributing. As you already know, that's something, you know. So I would encourage your state reps who are running to...
There are, thank you. There are 29 state parks that are on lakes that don't can totally enclose their lakes, like Bear Brook does. And by far, Tuckaway is the only one that has such a high percentage of shoreline owned by the state. Nobody else comes close. But so far, at least, the state has said, "When it starts impacting our state park revenue, we'll get interested."
That canoe launches and impacting it.
So, but we keep them informed, and we're, we try to keep pressing on them, but it's, you know, you know, it's tough to influence the state to, you know, jump in on that. Because what they're going to say is, "If you do it for you, we'll have to do it for everybody," even though there are no other "everybodies." We're really the only one that's even close to that percentage of shoreline that's owned by the state.
Right.
And oh, by the way, one time, what Ben said, one time in Gove's Cove, we had 72 markers on the cove. The place looked peppered with markers, you could hardly get, it looked like a ski slalom course. And, you know, when you, what happens is when you get that much milfoil, boaters don't avoid it, they try to, they try to weave around it. But it's, they fragment it, it spreads. So it's kind of an exponential growth once it gets to that point. Because what's there starts getting fragmented and spread even further, so.
Do you have the ability to, like, close off that section of water?
We cannot. We cannot. State will not allow us to close a public body of water.
Well, just that section where the markers are?
Nope.
You can't, you can't put a line of buoys and say...
We, the markers are in the water, we have signs we put up saying, "Please avoid this area, invasive milfoil," but we can't stop people.
And the fishing log going down there? The fishing tournaments, stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's an attractive, not a nuisance, it's a distraction for the fishermen. And there's a fishing tournament almost every day in the summertime on the weekends.
Yeah. And you can't limit it to non-motorized boats only?
Nope.
No. You can, you can close off very small areas.
Yeah.
But you can't, like the South Channel, that big red area?
Yeah.
That's a major thoroughfare on the lake, there's no way to close that off, no way. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for, thanks for bringing this to us.
Very good job.
All right, next up.
12 pages or 18 pages, pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
It was very concise, too. Thank you.
Can we have a second?
Of...
We had a response to that. Like, we have not seen it.
After we get through the agenda, I can get, yeah. Deanne wasn't actually on the agenda, is...
Oh, yeah, I was going to have her take the place of fire for budgets.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Gotcha, election. All right, let's, let's get the assessing material taken care of.
There are several intent to cuts.
Yeah, and that's it, right? So, yeah, we can do those in one motion. So I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the intent to cuts for map 23, lot, lot 2, map 3, lot 12 dash 2, lot 3, excuse me, map 3, lot 12 dash 1, map 3 dot lot 2 point, or 2 dash 2, and map 52, lot 4 dash 1.
Second it.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, it's unanimous. All right, on to general business. First up, Public Works Mutual Aid.
You didn't make a motion to approve and sign it last time. Remember, Chris presented it, that document, so that we would help other towns and they would help us and would formalize the agreement as far as, you agreed to do it verbally, but you didn't take a motion and, and assign it.
Okay, is that in...
Should be in that red folder.
The, okay.
I'm just curious why the department had, didn't present that.
Well, we had the whole conversation last one, right?
Yeah, but he wasn't there there either.
I don't know why Chris didn't, I can blame Chris now, but why it didn't ask him?
Is it, is it not there?
Not on this one. Let me look in the... Here we go, it's right here.
Found it, okay, good.
All right. So we still need to take a vote on this?
Yeah, didn't we already vote on it?
Yes, vote to approve the mutual aid agreement.
So, no, did we vote on it previously?
I don't think, I don't remember whether you voted or not.
So we'll just go through the motion and approve it now, right?
Yeah.
That'd be the easiest way.
Yeah, so I remember we, we did discuss it at length last time, but...
The agreement was distributed to board, it's a formal agreement, but there's no evidence of a vote in the minutes.
All right, well, in that case, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the mutual aid between the surrounding towns and the town of Nottingham. You know, this is basically for the fact of if there's a disaster or something that's needed, you know, they help us, and we help them, is what it's going to be. It's just an agreement that most towns have, we love the towns. Ben, you have a question on that?
Does it name the towns, or is it just any town?
Because most of the towns in the state are in the agreement.
Oh, okay.
So you, you'll help somebody close usually.
Okay.
Some places, it's quite easy. As I remember, Rochester had a vacuum that was used on catch basin sumps, so they'd come and help us on that, and we had a grader, or, you know, that kind of stuff back and forth. But this covers you for insurance purposes, you're all covered because you've got an agreement to, to go back and forth for equipment.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, it's unanimous. Was it just a single line, or were there three or five lines on that one?
What, the mutual aid?
Yeah.
No, it's just one. That's just the details.
Okay.
Why don't you sign as vice chair then?
Yeah.
It doesn't require you to help, and sometimes there'll be area-wide emergencies and they don't have ability to help. But if it's a specific, narrow, defined, you know, like when the tornado hit Epping, you know, or something like that, people could go in and help and, you know, clear what needs to be done. So.
All right, that's done. All right, next up, overall budget.
You're going to see a lot of the pieces as we go along. The bottom line is a spending increase of 6.55%. That is about $121,000 more than the 4% cap would be. So in the process of doing this, your, your net changes, increases and decreases, along with your revenue, needs to somehow adjust that $121,000. You either need to increase revenue somehow, or, you know, projecting an increase in revenue, or make moves, taking, I think, one that's probably quite easy is the fire department emergency door fix and put that in opera money or something like that. So you could take a few things out, but the net change is $121,000 from where we are right now. And as you go along, you may add things, you may move things to special warrant articles, but that's the number. So that's my presentation overall on the budget.
The, the increase in the insurance rates, how, how bad is that going to impact? What was the total?
It's under, I think it's on page three, if I remember right, Personnel Administration. Where is it? Bottom of two. No, it's on the bottom of two. So there are several factors entering into that, going from 203 to, to 410, a part of which is you added four new firefighters. So 11% increase on, on 200,000. So eleven percent increase on, on two-hundred-thousand would be, you know, like twenty-two thousand dollars, but it went up a hundred and thirty-nine, and that's because you're adding staff and then you're adding whole plans, not just a, an increase. So the net, net change on health insurance is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, but as I said, you've, you've added staff. And if you look at the end of the fire budget, um, which is, um, where is it here?
It's the next section after the police department.
Yeah.
Can't tell you what number page it is, but-
Yeah, yeah. Got to fix this so it does, two-hundred-and-twenty-two, first light one. If you look at line two-hundred-and-one.
Yep.
This is where we put the warrant article for all the new officers, so that the new officers did not affect the cap. So the, if you look at how Chris had calculated the cap, he had indicated that, that warrant article, because it was approved with the stated impact on future budgets, we put that in to figure the base from which the four percent is figured. So it all is in that one line. We didn't try to apportion it out, but some of that would be the health insurance money. Some of it's going to be what appears up in line one-ninety-eight, where you see there's a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar increase. So those increases are in part at three-hundred thousand, but they appear where they're going to be in the budget. Does that make sense, what I just tried to explain?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's how I got to the cap impact change. In some ways, it would be easier dealing with a spending cap, but, you know, but basically your spending is going up six point, it's going up a hundred and twenty thousand more than your four percent increase for, for that. So it doesn't all have to come from spending, but that's what the number that needs to be adjusted from this draft budget.
Okay. And what's our, what's our timeframe for getting this work completed for the budget committee?
I think they've got meetings, the first two meetings in November, I think, are related to default budget, the school. The first draft is due November seventeenth. That's when town department head presentations go to the budget committee, November seventeenth. So you have basically a month to-
To get our first draft ready.
To, to, well, to finalize what you want to have presented to the budget committee.
Yeah, okay.
The budget draft as a whole is December first, but the department heads will go November seventeenth.
Okay. All right, any questions on, on this? There's definitely a lot to get through.
There'll be a quiz in another hour on all the numbers.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely going to have to do our homework on this, be ready for this this year.
Do you have a question, Ben?
He's not here today. We're not doing the highway, so when he gets here, I'll have that question. Or actually, I can talk to him.
You tell me what it is and I'll pass it on to him.
I believe we have only four employees, right?
That, I, I haven't been here long enough to know the answer to that.
He's budgeting five, so I believe we only have four, include himself.
I, I'll ask him. I, I don't know how that, how that worked. Five employees. Yep. I'll try to get an answer tomorrow, Wednesday on that. Yeah, it, it helps as you see questions. Email me your questions. And then I'll try to get all the answers back. And I, what I usually do is I'll send an email to everybody and then I put it in my report, so it's public information.
So I guess the follow-up question to that is, is if he is budgeting five, when is he planning on filling that fifth slot?
Yep.
It's probably like everybody else, trying to find somebody, it's quite difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a valid question.
I'm sorry, we, we have folks here that are-
Yeah, but just, just feel free to email me these questions as they come up. I'll try to get all the answers together and get them to you as quick as I can.
Okay. Thank you, John.
All right. Figures. All right, rec budget.
And that's that, that's line three-hundred-and-thirty-two.
All right.
All right.
You want me to just start right at the top?
Dive, dive right in.
All right. So our first line is our salary line. There is some change in this line proposed for this year. Who comes out of this line currently is myself and half of my assistant director's salary and benefits, so that will stay the same. Her other half, the other half of her salary comes out of our rec revolving fund, so that cuts this number down a little bit here. We have two gatekeepers this year, and that stipend is about eight hundred dollars for the summer, which has been great. Thank goodness they stepped up this year. I know in previous years I've asked for a gate, but with those gatekeepers who have both expressed interest in coming back next year, we're going to keep it the way it is from, from here. And it worked really well, and we only have the gate lock cut once this summer, which was nice, a nice surprise. I have put in new additions for this line. I have put in an attempt for lifeguards. As you guys know, it has been really tough to hire this job. We decided that we were going to try to go up to fifteen dollars an hour, part-time, to work in conjunction with summer camp, because we just can't use the town beach with camp if we don't have a guard. So I want to give it another attempt this summer to try and hire somebody. You'll see a couple lines down. We have, I have some training dollars that I've added to, to cover costs of training. Those costs have gone up like everything else, but it's very, it's important. The town beach is a, is a treasure that we have, so it's, it's a quick, easy access to get these kids cool in the summertime months. So that's important to us this year, to give it another try. I've also added a new seasonal part-time facilities maintenance position that I'd like to, to see what happens with. I gave Kelly a PowerPoint. I have updated my facilities PowerPoint with all of our assets and that we, things that we covered. Did you guys get that? I don't know if it's in your packets or not. If not, I have a PowerPoint.
It's, yeah, it's right here in your packet. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I presented this in 2019. I have now updated it to reflect all the changes that have happened. And a lot of the things in the budget, there's pictures that kind of go along with it. Here is this PowerPoint that you can see. Yeah? So for, we have, especially in the, I'm looking to do some sort of seasonal position. We have a lot of outdoor maintenance with our parks that just doesn't get done. We try to host cleanups and community-wide stuff, and it, it brings out only so many people. We're very lucky, we have connections with the NYA and the PLIA this year. That helped out with the town beach, but if you were there in the middle of summer, all the work that was done, the grass grew back, the sand was covered in weeds again, it needs to be maintained weekly, if not daily, to keep the sand fresh and, and the growth of weeds down and all that sort of stuff. The same can be said with our playground area, our bandstand, our trails, all of that stuff. When, when you don't maintain the overgrowth, it, it just looks like a mess. And, and we, we've spent all that time ripping out the bricks to make the swakway better, and now all of a sudden, these trees have like just engulfed this back pathway to our playground and surrounding areas. So I think with this position, it's going to, you know, it could be an opportunity to, to start somebody in slow. I know right now hiring anybody is tough still, but it's an opportunity to start and to try to get our outdoor facilities maintained in a little bit better of a way. Any questions with that line?
Any questions?
So is this going to take the place of contracting this, these out? So is the person that you're expected to do the maintenance is going to be mowing and all that stuff, too?
No.
Okay, so I just saw that there, I was a little confused.
No, no, this, that, that, that would cost, that overhead cost to get all of that equipment would be very extreme for a quick change like this, but I'm thinking more of someone who can help do odd jobs. You know, we had vandalism that happened this past summer with our story walk, the back door in the back of the building, things that get broken. I don't possess those skills to do, to fix those things, so it would be great to have somebody like, we have Gina who helps clean the building, somebody to call to, to try to help us fix these things. This is, this has been a struggle for my department for the last couple of years, just in that, you know, we have, you know, we have programs and events that we're doing that take up all of our time. We have three weeks of the year that we're not with kids with our after-care program and our summer camp program, so do these outdoor tasks. I really, I need, I need help. So, but yeah, we, it would be too much of a cost to go extreme. You know, in a perfect world, it would be great if we could do that all internally, but we don't have that equipment, and my rec band can't support that.
No, all the words.
Moving on?
Yep, moving on.
Perfect. The next line, overtime stays the same, postage stays the same. Our, in our rec dues and conference line, with our third employee, we have costs have gone out. We also, the place that we used to have for our January conference burned to the ground this past summer, so they had to move venues and prices went up. So that's incorporated here in this line. It's important that the three of us go to these conferences because it's the, it's the one chance that we get to network and really learn new trends and things that we need to do moving forward. That, that also line includes our dues and con, or dues for our membership, which gives us all of the information, training opportunities, networking, that kind of stuff. So that's, that's what that line is. It went from fifteen hundred to two thousand, and, yeah, there's that one. Below that is recreation training. This fund is used for educational trainings that pop up throughout the year. This year, I will dip into that line, that seven hundred dollars, to cover the costs of the conference, because we didn't have enough money. And then I've added into this line as well, the expected training costs for two lifeguards. It would be great to have one lifeguard, but it would be even better to have two, so. And those trainings are about five hundred apiece to train them. And that, I, I don't know what the new costs are for the next year, but that's what it was last year. Moving down to field, beach, and mowing, and park maintenance, we, I have it broken down for the mowing of Marston and this community center. This past year, we are, we didn't spend as much because Marston was delayed in getting irrigation put in and all of that, so we didn't have grass to grow, we didn't have grass to mow for the first half of the summer. So with the irrigation that's put in and everything else that's happened, that is predicted. Grass is growing currently, which is great. We're going to do another round of seeding in the back portion of the field, which is where we play flag football right now, and we are going to, we anticipate mowing and NYA will be using those fields as well, soccer, so those fields are going to be used much, much more next year, we promise. So that's that line. What else is included? Fertilizing, fertilizing costs, six thousand, that's, you know, broken out, kind of what we went off with this year. Sinage for outdoor facilities, those are constantly being replaced and put up. We work with the trails committee as well to do signage for the trail at Marston, the properties that are on town sites, no dog signs, that kind of stuff, that, signs at the town beach that come up, like rules, signs that get damaged, all those need to be replaced when that happens. Emergency funds to fix vandalism, broken equipment, I estimate it at two thousand. Every year, something happens.
Our insurance doesn't cover that.
Depends on how big it is, I, I believe. The stuff that we've had happen is so small, but it's detrimental to my budget. I don't have enough that, that can fix that thing. And again, I don't have the staff who can put it together either. So I always have to ask for a volunteer or ask Highway if they have time to help, and he does a great job with helping when he can, and so do his guys, so it's nice to have that support as well. But, you know, an example of that is the, the broken glass in the back of a building that was sitting there for a few weeks. We don't have anybody to call for those things. So that is a building maintenance issue. In the PowerPoint on, underneath my town hall, community center playground section, I have pictures of what it currently looks like, but you'll see, if you go, if you go to the middle of the, the PowerPoint, I should have labeled the pages, sorry about that. Underneath the town hall and community center story walk and ball fields, we worked with the library and an Eagle Scout to put together this amazing story walk, and it lasted about four or five months, and then was vandalized by some, by a group of people. And that all caused, you know, four hundred dollars apiece for us to build, and those were funds that we didn't anticipate, so that hasn't been fixed yet. So that would be this line, this maintenance line, is where I would want to pull things from that. And that carries into my next line, which is just recreation equipment supply and maintenance. In this line, this year, I've added, we always need to, you know, we have trash cans we, we buy, we have outdoor cleanup tools we buy, picnic tables, porter potties that we use all season long. We do split porter potty costs with NYA and Strikers, so that lessens the burden on us, which is nice. We, with this damage of the story walk, we also had pretty significant damage to our bandstand, which is a critical part of summer concert series. All of our events are kind of down on, by that bandstand. So if you go to the bandstand section, you'll see, but one of the story walk fixtures actually ended up through the roof, and it stuck through the roof, so now there's a hole. Shingling has to be fixed, there's the light that's broken. So estimated about five thousand to, to make those adjustments and those fixes, but that's a, that's a need for us. That's a staple of, you know, our summertime fun. And to have a hole in a roof to help with rainy concert nights, that's not going to help us. So that's, that's why that line jumped up as well, to fix the story walk and to fix the bandstand. Yeah, it was unfortunate, but it's, it's, those are two pieces that we want to keep in good shape because they're used all the time. Yeah, and there's support with the library and, and us as well, so that's that line. Recreation program line, I have broken up into every event that we, that we do. This line I have jumping from eleven thousand to thirteen through three hundred. This includes all of our programs for our legacy leaders that are fifty-five plus. That's lunches, picnic, Yankee swap, walking groups, which is new this year, and our holiday light trip. I've estimated that at twenty-five hundred, which with all of the, with the lunches, the picnics, the Yankee swaps, and all of that included, that, that's going to cover it just perfectly. We have a great group of volunteers who provide food for these, for this group, and if we did not have that, that line would be higher than what we're currently spending, just because, you know, we'd have to make food or get it catered every month, and we have a, a huge network of support, so we're really thankful to have them. The next item I have broken out- The next item I have broken out, we do our egg hunt and we do a you've been egged option, which is we come to your house and egg your yard, um, which is pretty awesome. Uh, we do our townwide cleanup day, two hundred dollars, our fishing derby, costs of fish have gone up significantly. Um, we were very lucky to have a generous donation this past year to help cover those costs. And then the following year, we have another donation that'll help with those fish. But we wanna make it bigger and better. Um, so we spent about thirteen hundred on that event this year. So it's not too much of a jump to make that event and keep it sustained at where it is. Community yard sale and plant swap, that was new this year, estimating that at three hundred dollars to make that happen. Parks and Recreation Month, we wanna do two or three pop-up events in July, um, which will be great. We're looking at doing a big touch of truck for the town, um, more townwide events for every age. So our goal this year internally is to make our free community events accessible to everybody, not just families. I think in years past, it was kind of more dedicated to, to, to families with kids. This year, I think we've done a great job with kind of incorporating all ages into each event that we run. So we're really excited to kind of plan July and see what fun things we could do for everybody. Summer concert series with everything else, costs of bands have gone up. We'd like to do five shows a summer. Um, sometimes if I can get a local band, um, which we try to do, we could get six in there. So that will help us do that. Our Family Pumpkin Festival and Spooky Walk, which is happening this weekend on Saturday from four thirty, from four to seven thirty. We, we do a spooky walk, we do food, um, we have games and carnival games. We have about twenty volunteers, which is our highest number yet. Um, and we have already a hundred and forty people signed up to come. So we usually have over two hundred people who come to this Halloween event. Holiday Parade and Craft Workshop. We have not made a ton of upgrades to this event and this is on my list to kind of notch up a little bit. It's a really nice event, another big event where we have a lot of people that turn out for. So it's important to add funding to this line so that our events can continue to grow. Prices are increasing across the board to make these happen and we have volunteers and that keeps our costs low. But um, it, it, it still doesn't help us make these events happen for people. I'm pretty proud that we've been able to do what we've been able to do with not a lot. So um, that's, that's kind of a breakdown of what we do and we do that all alongside the, the rec revolving programs that happen during the year too. So it's busy and we like it. Um, and that's about it for changes. Um, the rest of my lines are advertising, which we bumped up to two hundred, not a huge increase. Office supplies, equipment, um, yeah, stayed about the same. So happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Mention um, that rec scholarship hardship.
Thank you.
That was taken out of the general assistance line, uh, it's three hundred and eleven. So we didn't know exactly where to spend it, but we felt that was to give scholarships for recreation for those who were financially in need. So that's the justification for welfare, but we feel it should be budgeted in recreation. So that's why it's here this year. It's really not that new, it's just that it was being spent out of that welfare line, three eleven.
Yep, and so eleven thousand, that covers our summer camp tuitions. That leaves zero funding for aftercare and any additional recreation program. I have received some questions about if we offer scholarships for aftercare. So that's something to anticipate, I think, coming sooner rather than later. We see a lot of families that, we don't know their whole backstory, but we know that they're in need and they're looking for care and support. And we're a very affordable option in this area. So to be able to provide that is really, is really special, I think, and really great. It's been a huge help um for our spending on, on that side to make sure that we can have enough equipment, supplies, pay enough staff. That helps with, with our staff salaries. We hire about fifteen to twenty seasonal. And without that money coming in to help because of those ten to, to twelve kids that need help or need care, it would make my budget really tight. So it's nice to be able to, to rely on that. And with recreation, with our rec revolving fund, that money is all generated, summer camp, aftercare, that's all generated by tuitions. And so it's not fair to put that on the people paying for care. So that's why that line is in there this year. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Courtney? Okay.
All right.
We're good.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for, yeah, thanks for coming in and bringing the
Yeah.
Bringing the stuffs.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. All right, police budget.
I don't know, the, the group behind me is a lot. Come here to see me? Hi, uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Fon Woodman, please chief. I don't know if I, this sounds funny, um, have the budget that you're looking at. So I think I can do that by just getting one. Look at that. And it's nice and big. Thank you, John.
Standing with line one seventy-one.
Look at this. Look at that. Although it's all out of order. That's, I don't know what isn't. Okay. Do you want me to go line by line? I don't, I don't know if
Yeah, I mean, for the stuff that stays static, um, you know, we'll
So right away, the first line, the salaries, obviously you guys know what that is, eight, eight officers, that includes me. That went up, uh, basically, uh, because of, uh, cost of living raises that the town gave out, the cola raises and merit raises that I gave out. I have a, a, a pretty good core people actually that have been there a while. We had a couple of promotions, so um, that line went up. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions about that?
So this is looking back at what has already occurred, whereas looking forward, the raises are in financial administration.
Oh, good to know. Okay, um, so the next line is just the overtime line. Um, I vote, I kept it at twenty-five, uh, nothing, nothing changed with that. Next line, uh, part-time, uh, I have a part-time, one part-time position. It's been extremely hard to fill. The one, the part-time position that I had this year, uh, that part timer moved, uh, up to full-time when somebody left, um, which was great. But that's left an opening. Um, that position has been harder and harder to fill for many reasons. Number one, it's harder to fill any positions, right, that we've talked about, um, in, in public service. I, I, and number two, um, that is a specific person that basically is already full-time certified, that would be coming on part-time. So I lowered that, uh, just in, in fairness, because I don't know if I'm going, I'm going to try to fill it with the perfect candidate that wants to come on board and you work, you know, up to, I think they allow twenty-seven hours. Twen, I think it's like twenty-seven hours a week, um, but I, I don't need them for that much. But I lowered that number, um, because I don't know that I'm going to be able to fill it and, and work that much. So I just, there's a decrease in that number, in that line, if that makes sense. Any questions on that? Nope. Just moving down, uh, my A salary is the same. Uh, special services, that's detailed stuff. They keep it just in there as a dollar. We've talked about that before, but we know that at the end. Prosecuted services say the same, postage, uh, dues and conferences. Everything's the same, publications, uh, training. I think that's the next line item that, uh, went up. The main reason honestly is ammunition. Um, our, my ammunition comes from the training line. That's how we do all of our firearms training. Um, and if anybody's familiar with ammunition, if I have any people that like to shoot on the board, it's, it's, it's insane. Um, so that's the increase there. Um, and, uh, in service hours, like I talked to you guys before, they keep expanding every year. So it's just to, um, you know, to make that make sense and to, to stay on top of that. And training is expensive. I try really hard, um, to get all the free training that we can. But training costs money, just like anything else. People wanna make money and they, uh, cost a lot for the, uh, for the training. So any questions on that? And testing is the same, uh, uniforms, uh, all that, looks like, uh, it's the same. Software licensing, the same. Service contracts, uh, that went down a little bit, um, because now we've merged with the town, we're using Back Bay. I don't, and I, I don't really know, this sounds bad, what that's gonna look like for us. I mean, IT services are hit or miss, you know, if there's something that goes wrong, we need them. You know, we might go six months and not have any glitches and then all of a sudden they're out and they're repairing a system that costs a lot of money. So, um, that was something, you know, that, uh, you know, Chris Sterndale said, you know, uh, the town will pay, we'll, we'll pick up most of that. But there's still services, um, from the PD side that we're gonna have to use. I, I just, I lowered it knowing that the town is gonna take care of some of it. But that might, that number may go down in twenty twenty-three and I'll reevaluate if that makes any sense. I just don't really know what that, that's gonna look like. Office supply, same, office equipment, same, gasoline, that's another, I left it the same, but I, I guess I, I don't have the answers to that either because right now I only have like nine hundred dollars left for the rest of the year for that line. And I don't know what gas prices are gonna be, um, in twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I, I used fifty percent on the, uh, the various fuels and everything straight through, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, you look at what has, has happened to the price, the, what's going on in the world, it's doubtful that it's coming down. So, um, this year's experience from, let's say, April onward would be more accurate for prediction than the last year's budget number. So I think you're, you're low by at least fifty percent on this number.
Okay, so maybe that needs to go up?
Yes.
Oh geez.
Either that or buy a bicycle.
Yeah, exactly. Um, I don't know. So I guess, I guess we'll reevaluate that number before I bring it to the budget committee. I don't know. I was looking for guidance from you guys too. Maybe I thought you might have, there you go, there was the guidance. Perfect. Okay, here we go, moving on.
Really gonna have to check, I mean
I know, it's, it's very difficult.
You gotta figure everything at least three or four dollars a gallon in order to be accurate, because we don't know where it's gonna be.
Right.
So
I'm sure other departments have dealt, you know, Highway
If you're looking at this now, you haven't changed the number at all?
No.
And you only have nine hundred dollars left?
I, I, yeah, so I, I'd have to look.
I think fifty percent is a
Right.
Pretty accurate number I would go.
Right.
So you'd be looking at twenty-four thousand or
Right, yeah, to go up, yep. Um, cruiser maintenance, same. The other one would be, uh, equipment procurement, um, that's to the outfit, uh, twenty twenty-three cruiser. So that's that number. Uh, radio repair is the same. Telephone, I think that, uh, now that that's paid out on the town side. Last year there was a lot of confusion, right? You guys kept asking me questions about my internet, my telephone, uh, all that stuff. And we didn't, nobody had any answers of who pays what, I guess, so the PD doesn't take care of any of that. That's all the town's side because all the phones are probably through the same company, if that makes any sense. Internet, uh, looks like it went up a little bit. Or is it the same? No, it was zero. Say, say it's the same, say it's the same. Sorry. Dare is the same, um, miscellaneous, same thing, nothing's changed. The next line that you'll see that went up is the cruiser. I think that's, again, for obvious reasons. If anybody's tried to even buy a personal vehicle, um, prices are up, everything is up, so. Um, the only, and so with that too, this brings me to the next thing and I, I tried to, uh, explain it, uh, to the board the last time I was here. You know, just discussing CIP, which this has nothing to do with. But my, my goal would be in twenty twenty-three, if, uh, if I'm able to, is, uh, we only have four fleet vehicles and that poses a lot of problems like I discussed before. I would like to retain a vehicle. So instead of getting, so that doesn't reflect a trade-in value as well. So usually every year I have a, I have a cruiser in my budget and we just swap one out and we get a trade-in for that, for that year, for the, uh, the one that we're purchasing. So that, that number is just a, a regular number that, that's to
So chief,
Yes.
Just based on our conversations we've had in the past, the reason, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you want another vehicle because you got a number of officers going to court, vehicles going to get maintenance, vehicles down, uh, you know, investigations, road details.
Yeah, every, all, all of the above, there, I mean, there have been many, many times. There's times that obviously probably you drive by and see all cars and say, what do they need another car for? You know, those are just, just like anything else. But there's a lot of times that we find ourselves without a car, maybe one hate, one was in an accident, one needs vehicle maintenance.
Where we saw someone using their own personal vehicle to pick up stuff around town. That shouldn't happen.
Right, so, so that would, that's my goal. So I, you know, it hasn't been done in years and years. We're probably the only town, like I told you around, you guys last time around here that rock four cruisers. Everybody else with our population, our employee size has, has at least five or six cruisers. Some, some have seven. I'm, I'm not looking to do that, but I think it would, it's, uh, safe and, and beneficial to the town for safety to, to add another fleet vehicle. If you have any more questions about that, I can talk, but that's my budget.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
No, the only significant thing is, is just the, the no trade-in on the cruiser. I think that's, that's fairly reasonable. Obviously, uh, what John was saying earlier, I'd redo the
The gas.
The gasoline thing, so at least you're not, the situation comes this time next year.
Right.
I think everything else looks good. I think you were very conservative on that, chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, too conservative on gasoline.
Yeah.
I know. Well, hey, listen, okay?
Did you have any warrant article items coming up?
So the, so, uh, yes, the only warrant article was the IT, the tech, the tech, um, and I don't even, uh, know what, I have it, yes.
In, in the CIP, she had twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, what was it called? EMDTs?
Well, I had that too. That's in that, again, that's not gonna be a warrant article and I was looking to do that, um, in twenty twenty-four. But yes, we do need, we're going to need to get, uh, and I get a grant for some of that money, um, but MDTs, yes.
Well, and you had a tech capital reserve fund for ten.
Yep, a tech capital reserve fund. Which one, Steve?
Oh, mobile data terminal.
Yeah, you asked us that last time, Steve. Yeah, okay.
Don't make excuses.
Yeah.
Mobile data So yes, if we're talking about the tech, the tech account, that was the one that, because we have all these MDTs now and, um, printers and cameras and there's things that cost a lot of money and if one goes down, I, I need to be able to get it back up and going. And I, and I thought that that was the most responsible way, um, to have money available to me if I need it for that, for that stuff and it would
Would, would this be the first year for the tech capital reserve?
It would, yes.
Because I don't see any funds in there in the
Right, it's, this is like a new thing that, uh, me and Chris Sterndale were, I, you know, I had approached him and said, and again, I didn't reinvent the wheel. A lot of police agencies and other municipalities do that. They have a, they call it a, some of them just call it a plain equipment fund because things that we carry, for whatever reason, costs a lot of money. Um, and
Yeah, well, my question would be on the tech capital reserve, should it be limited to police? Should there be a tech capital reserve that's, would cover things that happen to tech equipment, servers, uh, computers, uh, other things as well? Or should it just be police? Because FIRE has a lot of tech, you know, you guys don't share.
Yeah, things that are slated for law enforcement are generally, well, generally, you know, the price tag's higher simply because it's
There's only one company that makes them, you know, like Motorola, yeah.
Yeah, so
I'm just asking a question.
No, I think that's a good question. I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to anything as long as I get what I need. You can put anybody on my account. You like that answer?
Well, it's, it depends upon Well, it's, it depends upon how we then word the article to establish the capital reserve. But we'll, that's, that's a January issue.
It is. But does that make sense, why I would want that and what that, and it sounded like last time?
What was the total cost?
Just starting it up for $10,000.
Yeah, but what's the total cost? Twenty-five?
There's no total, the tech fund is different, you're talking about the MDTs. For what that, sorry? So the total is $28,000, like $136, I think. And 10 of it, we get back in a grant. It's pretty, pretty cheap money.
ARPA can cover that.
That's the kind of thing I think ARPA could cover. In general, it was fairly big on that kind of stuff, so I would expect, I, I'd be very surprised if it didn't. But the $10,000 article, tech. How, when you say tech, let's see if we could define it a little broader or more carefully. Would you view tasers as in there? Would you view radios? Would you view computers?
Did you see, did you see it all written out, John, and I only say that because I don't know what you have?
I do not have your spreadsheet for, yeah, let, let me, no, don't, no, tomorrow's
Okay, okay.
Wednesday's fine.
Sure.
Okay, so we would just have to make sure the definition is broad enough.
Right.
I may have seen it and not remembered either. My memory does that sometimes. I've seen so much new stuff.
Always my excuse, I saw it, but I don't remember, I heard you say it, but what?
So is there anything else?
No, that, that was it, it was just, I think, like I said, my, my things that changed were my salary line, which Merit raises and Kohler. My equipment line went up. But that's because everything has gone up, really. And I'll fix the gasoline line, because I think that. John, your, your map, your.
Oh, no, okay, thank you. One thing, that merit line that I referred to is line four, it's basically level funded at $75,000 for Kohler and Merit. So, just an FYI.
All right, any other questions for the Chief? All right, I guess we're good.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep.
All right. All right. Talk to us about election budgets. What line are we on that, what line number is?
I don't have any idea.
I can tell you in just a minute. It stats on 35, first page.
Yep, and so, one of the things that I'll remind you is the election portion of the budget is the, the town clerk has a portion. The moderator has a portion. And then the supervisors have a portion. So what we're talking about tonight is only part of the number, it's not the whole number. And so I don't have that, the whole spreadsheet in front of me because the numbers on the spreadsheet don't, no, they don't agree with my numbers, because there's other things in there. But I can at least tell you the lines. So.
So this is just for elections, not the moderator?
So it's just soup, the supervisor portion of the elections. It's not the town clerk's portion, the town clerk portion includes things like the printing of the card that goes in the machine, because those have to be produced by LHS every year, so that's not in ours. And she's got a couple of other things, printing ballots for town meeting, for town elections. That's not in, in our portion. So basically, our portion includes our salaries, our training. And then we have our own lines for postage and mailing and things like that. So we only have one known election for next year, and that is town meeting. And two deliberative sessions, one for the school, one for the town. Previous to 2020, we, as supervisors, build the SAU for the deliberative session. And then, because it all basically comes out of the same money, Chris is like, just put it in your budget and just, you know, make it easy, we'll just do it all through payroll. So that's what we started doing, so it includes the school deliberative session and the town deliberative session. Which, as you know, used to be about 45 minutes to an hour and now they can go eight to 10 hours. So it makes a, it makes a big difference. So two deliberative sessions, one one actual election, the town election, which will be at the school. And then we also put in our budget an additional election. And the reason that we did that is to anticipate any special elections that might be called and the potential for having the federal presidential primary in December of 2023. That is a possibility. It's not a huge possibility, but we wanted to be responsible and budget for it. So we did put costs for the presidential primary for the supervisors into, so it could be a special election or the presidential, either way. You know, it's on our constitution that we're first in the nation. Other people are trying to push up ahead of us, and so, you know, there was talk actually four years ago, or two years ago, of us being in, in, in December, so we wanted to just be prepared for that in the, in the case of that happening. Oh, I know, it's gonna be Christmas Day, just watch, no, I'm kidding. So the other things that are going on next year is there is a huge overhaul of our database that is run by, that is done by the state. We have no idea what that's going to entail, but it is going to entail some significant training from the state to us, and then learning on our own through what they call the playground, it's sort of an offline snapshot of the database where we can go in and we can practice stuff without actually like mistakenly change anybody's records. And so we need to be prepared for, for, for that training and for us to learning it just before a ginormous election. So there is training money in there for that. And then the other thing that the legislature put into place is that the assessing clerks are required now to give us the inventory documents that they get when a property in town has changed hands. So when, you know, a property is sold from one party to the next party, they receive those documents, the assessing clerk does, Kelly does, and then she makes a copy for us, and then we're required to now send letters that we're going to remove the previous owners from the checklist so that we have less at, on our purge years, the, the, oh, one years. So that there's less people to take off because we can keep up with those people that have moved out that may, we may never be notified that they've registered somewhere else. So it's just a way for us to keep the checklist a little bit cleaner, so we're required to do that. And for that reason, postage printing and office supply has gone up because we do have our own lines for that within the, the different printers and the mail machine and things like that. And then we also put a computer, a laptop computer into our budget this year and a telephone. And the reason I put a telephone is because we don't have a telephone at our desk. And so if we need to call tech support and we need to do something on our computers, we don't have a phone that we can call tech support from the state or our own tech support to help because we have no phone at our, at our desk. We had one previously, a small handheld or whatever, but we don't, we can't even call Kelly to ask Kelly a question, we have to get up and walk around to ask her a question because we can't pick up the handset and just have any inter-office communication. So we put the cost of the lease, which we were told is $30 a month through Comcast for, to put the leasing for a phone for our, for our desk in the budget as well. And then, let me just make sure I've got everything. And then the last thing on our salary line, because of course we never hire people, we can never have, oh, I knew there was something else, filing cabinet. So as you know, our filing cabinet gets transported from here to the school and back again. And it is not a high, I can't remember what term you used for it. The really, the really sturdy, rigid.
Oh yeah, a full suspension.
Full suspension. And so John recommended that we buy a three drawer cabinet and have two three drawers rather than one five or one six drawer. And so we put one filing cabinet in the budget for this year to, you know, help with it going back and forth because the one that we have is getting damaged. The other two filing cabinets, both of the locks have broken, it's supposed to be our secure storage, but John's gonna get a locksmith in to take care of those locks, so we don't need new filing cabinets for those, we just need to get those, those repaired.
I've got the locks, I'll let you put them in.
What's that?
I've got the locks, I'll let you put them in.
Oh, awesome, okay, yeah, that, that's awesome. So then, on the salary line for supervisors, there is a, an increase, not only because we're accounting for two elections next year, but because we're accounting for the fact that we are currently at $12.50 an hour. And the part-time rec summer people are getting $14 to $15 an hour. And for the fact of everything the state and the federal government keep changing for our elections, the amount of responsibility that we have to stay up to date on all the laws and all of the changes and everything that we are constantly having to relearn how to do to keep our checklist, our checklist clean and also to make sure that only the people that are qualified to vote in our town. It, it's a, it's a pretty big job and we feel that $12.50 an hour needs to be changed. And so we are requesting an increase to $16 an hour. Questions? Thoughts?
Any questions? Thank you for your explanations.
Yes.
Very informative.
You, you may end up with a two draw, because I'm not sure how available three draws.
We couldn't find a three draw, so I think we're gonna end up with a two draw.
But it's just, the thinking being, if, if, if instead of the four draw being full, they had a two draw, they need one more draw. So that way there would be easier to transport even if you had one empty drawer in the four draw. As long, as long as it's the top drawer that you make empty.
Yep, we will never have an empty drawer.
Probably easier to move around.
We take more and more stuff to the election every single year.
Yeah.
Yep. All right.
Okay.
Well, thanks, guys.
We are good, thank you for coming in and walking us through that.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
All right, action items from last meeting. What did we have?
Talking about action items.
So we had, all right, so we were supposed to have our discussion on milfoil, which we had tonight. We've got a public hearing in next meeting for the use of ARPA funds for those.
I believe it's for acceptance of that, accepting, expend that additional state money, the $129,000 highway
Unanticipated revenue.
Ninety-something bridge money and those, those funds. And now you have a purpose for where that bridge money can go. We'll try to have better numbers by then.
Yep. Then it says department heads will come to the next two meetings, we've started that. Financials through September and ARPA funds in general, which we're definitely gonna be diving into that, and then the mutual aid policy acceptance. So that was we've addressed all those tonight. Okay.
I'm assuming the ARPA money was accepted months ago.
Was it last year?
Yeah, or even last year, it could have been last fall even.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any action items for next meeting? Anything we should make a note of writing down? Yeah. Okay. Lorraine's actually recording meeting and she'll do her notes after, so I just wanted to call that out in case. Just so she can make note of it. So, nothing you can think of? All right. Next up, we got non-public session, before we go on to non-public, there was you wanted to make a comment about one of the
My bad, just a couple of quick things, John.
Yeah, come on up, yeah, give your name and address for the, for the minutes and
I'm Robin Marshall, 189 Old Turnpike Road. So the first thing Sorry, it's Robin Marshall, 189 Old Turnpike Road, and I'll just go in the order that we went, so the milfoil. So I do believe that it was either August or September, they did, you guys did approve. He didn't mention it, but you did approve with Deanne for her to take money from the reserve, but that wasn't noted when he spoke that they might have to take reserve, but they, you, you guys approved that when Deanne was here, and it wasn't that long ago, because it was the last time I was here. So I just wanted that.
Yeah, I think it was August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I didn't want him to say we haven't taken from reserve, we might, well, you're, they already just did, so I just wanted to make sure that was put in the minutes. And then maybe if they stop pulling it, maybe the state would get involved, so I just wanted to, they keep putting a Band-Aid on the problem, but maybe the state would finally get approved if they just let it go. And I know that might be hurting, but it might get attention. And as far as Courtney with her walk in the bandstand being damaged, I didn't know if you could put a hunting camera or something and maybe to catch someone that might be doing damage, I don't know how much those cost. And as far as Chief, the warrant, if she kept that in the warrant article, I think the police always get their warrant articles passed. So I would suggest that you keep that in the warrant article.
Which, which in the warrant article?
The warrant article for her 20, or 10,000.
Are you talking about MDTs?
Yeah, like how you're
Okay, I didn't know.
Whether to put it in the police or put it in the other one, but the town usually supports the police really in the fire department really well. So I just want to encourage her to keep it in the police warrant article, she probably would get it passed.
Yes, thank you.
And then I just have the, you haven't brought up the recycling center, so I don't know if I can just speak to that very quickly.
Very quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Very quickly, so Saturday I went later in the day, it was about four o'clock, and I know the paper compactor has been broken for a while, all summer. And then the cardboard machine, they said, was broken. That's what, it was filled up and they were sitting outside and I said, hey, just so you know, nobody can put any more cardboard there. And they're like, well, it's broken anyway, so it's not going anywhere. So I didn't know if you knew that. And then the cans, they weren't, because they were shorthanded, we couldn't even put our cans where the cans go now, so now we had to put the cans outside and they said, be careful of the bees that are out there by the cans. So I just wanna, it's just going downhill very quickly. And it just seems like they just don't want to do work. And I passed it on to Ben, a picture of someone who doesn't particularly like to work there. Who's employed to work there, taxpayer dollars go to fund her to work there. Yeah, she doesn't seem to like to work, so I did send him a picture that I took and I have put a formal complaint, I did call over the summer, because every time I go, she just doesn't seem to be working, so that's all I wanted to say. Is that quick enough?
Thank you, Art.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't replaced the individual that was let go at the recycling center, they're still short-staffed, right?
Uh, yes, fast and low.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe we should all just take turns, huh?
Yeah.
Make it a fee. You and your fees.
Come on up, yep. Give your name and address for the minutes.
Sure, Maureen Campiola, 5 Gavriah Drive. Okay, I'm gonna start with the dump. Several months ago, I called Chris Sterndale to complain about the dump. I looked at the minutes, didn't look like he brought it to your attention, so I want to bring it personally to your attention now, so. As others have said, there is an individual, well, there's two individuals that worked, I think they're the only two that are left, I'm not sure. The only person who did do any work, I guess he got fired. But my two issues is that the young woman who works, doesn't matter what time of the day you go there, she sits at the desk and she's on her phone. We never, I never see her do anything, she did actually get up last Saturday when I went in there to take the cardboard. But prior to that, I, I'd never seen her actually get up and do anything, so you have a problem with her because she's on her phone constantly. Second is the guy with the beard. Besides harassing people, he's incredibly rude. Besides harassing people, he's incredibly rude. He harasses almost everybody that goes to the dump. I know he has a job to do, but the way in which he goes about it is really offensive as a taxpayer. But the other thing he does is he smokes right outside the building. I don't, I could not find a smoking policy. I don't know if we have one in town, but I really don't think that it is appropriate for him to stand out there all day long and smoke cigarettes. He always does it so that the wind brings it right to you. It stinks and, you know, personally, I don't think he should be smoking outside a town facility. But as I said, I looked on the website, I couldn't find whether or not you have a smoking policy, but if you don't, I think you should probably get one because that's all he does all day long, is smoke cigarettes. So, but I wanted you to know that, you know, I had brought these issues, I had brought these issues to Chris Sterndale when he was there in the role as town manager, and I'm pretty sure he didn't pass that on to you guys about him. So I wanted to make sure that it was on record that my complaint, at least, I brought it forth to you folks, okay? The other thing too is I'd like to know when the Board of Selectmen is going to adhere to the, to the voters and allow the swap area at the dump to go back to the way it was. We voted on that in March and nothing really has changed, and so I wanted to know what was being done about that because the will of the voters was pretty clear. So what are you doing?
So what, what was voted on was people's ability to pick things out of the dumpsters, be it scrap metal or scrap wood or whatever, and that passed. And yes, people are doing that now. The vote did not involve bringing back the swap shop, if that's what you're referring to?
Well, we used to be able to just leave stuff there at the end of the day if it wasn't, if people didn't take it, instead of actually having to physically go into the dumpster. If people didn't take it, they would just throw it away. And everybody knew that that was basically how it was handled. You know, you'd put it out to the side, over by where they did the electronics, and then at the end of the day, they would just throw it out if nobody wanted it. But if not, it was just, they would just be there and people would, you know, pick through it and take what they wanted.
We can't get the people working for the dump to do work, so you want to leave it outside and expect them to pick it up? Because they're not doing anything now. That's what you just said. And I'm agreeing with you. I'm not saying let's hold it there, but I don't think we're going to, by doing that, we might be adding another problem to our problem that's already existing.
I guess your problem is with the supervisor, the, the people who supervise that dump or the person or individual who supervises that dump. If they're not getting any supervision and they're not instructed to do their job the way they're supposed to, then they're going to do what they want, which is basically what they're doing now. But if people are allowed to put that stuff there, you still see it, or he, Sean still sees, or whatever his name is, still sees it at the end of the day, well, then he knows he has an issue. But, I mean, it seems like nobody is supervising that dump. People, they, those people just do whatever the hell they want and nothing changes and people are frustrated.
I'm with you. I'm not complaining about it.
Well, you, you could be with us, but what is the board doing about it? I mean, it's fine to be with the community, but nothing changes. It has been the same and it just gets worse and worse. And then the one guy who actually did work, you fired him. Now, I don't know what he did and I don't care what he did, but he was actually the only person who actually did anything over there. So, you know, you have a, you have a much larger problem that doesn't seem to ever get addressed. And I guess that's my point, John. It just never gets addressed. Everybody can stay there with the voters and that you understand, but you can't just keep saying that for months on...
I don't know how to solve the problem. So if you've got an idea for us, let it go. Because everybody can complain about that problem.
I, I used to supervise 400 people, so I have lots of ideas about how you could fix it.
Submit it to us. Let us know.
If that's what you want.
Let us know.
I could certainly do that.
I mean, we would love to hear, if you have more, that's way more experience than I do, send us an email. Let us know. Give us some suggestions. Because I mean, we, this is for me. I don't know how to solve it.
Well, I don't know, John, but he must be pretty well-versed in supervising people. Maybe you should start with the new guy first and see.
Probably right there. He's only been here two weeks.
You know, and see what he has to say, but...
And I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying, I don't know how to fix the problem. I know there's a problem. I think we all got it. I'm not going to talk about anybody's visual, but we have a budget problem with money. We can't go pay them more money. We can't, you know, find people to do the job. It's Saturday. It doesn't pay a lot. It's not the best environment to be working under. I mean, there's a, there's another thing, there's two of, we hope to get the miracle employee that would be polite with everybody, know everything, be courteous, be great, you know, be there every single time when they're supposed to be, even though they're working Saturdays, even when it's 100 degrees, we're making them work the nine to five, you know, but we had one. We don't, we had one.
We had them, yeah, we did. We had those employees.
Yeah.
And somebody got rid of them all.
It wasn't me, but that's...
And I'm not, I'm not saying it was you. I'm just saying we had a good employees that people liked. They were friendly and we got rid of all of them. And now what we have is this group of people and, and it is, it is a much larger problem. I'll agree with you. It is a much larger problem, but, you know, it's, it just seems like it's getting worse and not better. So I'm just going to leave it there. You know, we could talk about this all night long.
Oh, I know, it's...
Maybe it's time that we should look at contracting that out. Waste management. If this isn't going to get fixed, whether we get new employees or we're still going to, you know, save employees that shouldn't be and what have you, then it's time to contract this out and look at, seriously look at it.
That's going to be a lot more than what we're spending now, isn't it?
What's the alternative? We're going to continue listening to this for the next four, five years? You know, at some point, the townspeople are going to say enough's enough.
Hey, hey, I'm not, I'm not opposed.
So we as a board, we need to address this.
Sure.
So I'd suggest we get with John at some point and we're going to address this.
Okay. My second, my second thing is that I was wondering if there was, would be a way for us to put a tab on the website that says something to the effect of political affiliations where the Democrats can have their information and their contact information where they meet and the Republicans can have something on the website that says, here's who you contact, here's where we meet, and just a little bit of information because there is nothing on the website that allows anybody to know, no matter what their political affiliation is, in terms of where political committees meet in terms of the town.
This is a government website and hence we can't do that. In other words, because...
We doesn't say that in the policy because I looked and I couldn't find anything in the policy that said that.
It, it has to do with the basis in which we have a .gov extension. We're not allowed to do those kinds of things.
What's those kinds of things?
We can't advertise. We can't do commercial. We can't promote political parties. We can't...
Basically, we wouldn't be promoting anybody.
Basically, we have to have this site is for the town of Nottingham's governmental activities. We can reference state websites, federal government websites, but this is a governmental domain.
Which is paid by the taxpayers.
It's a governmental domain, so we're governed by that restriction. We're not a .com. We're not a .org.
So just for, for, when we met here, our meeting was on the calendar, so are you saying that that should not have happened?
I, I think having a meeting, listing a meeting that is occurring is different than starting to put information on two parties. You run into First Amendment rights, how come you don't have the KKK or you don't have other political groups on or you don't have, you know, you, you suddenly are opening it up to another whole, you have to open it up to everybody and that becomes a problem where it's a .gov extension.
I, I mean, I personally, if libertarians wanted a page, I wouldn't care. It didn't, wouldn't make a difference to me, but I guess I...
What if the KKK wanted to be on there?
Well, you know, everybody has free speech.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would know who they were. Yeah, they would know who they were.
Yeah, I mean, you, you sat down a slippery slope and I think that's why the government extensions are limited to government activities.
So I...
The same way like, like, you know, during election season, like, you don't see campaign signs in the building. You don't see pictures of the candidates from one office to the next. I mean, the town hall or the entity of the town itself has to be politically neutral.
But you're listing their meeting, so it's, and you listed hours, so it's not...
It's a schedule of events. That's all it is. It's not promoting.
It's not really.
It's not promoting one party or another. It's simply listing events.
And this is not promoting one party or another either. It's, would be just for the purpose of telling, if same people, here they, here's where they meet. Dems meet here on the Thursday. We would, you wouldn't be promoting anything.
By providing the contact information for...
Don't even put the contact information. Just put, this is when they meet, period. The end.
And that's on the calendar.
Not for the Republican Party, it isn't.
Then ask to put it on the calendar.
Okay, then I'm asking to have it put on the calendar.
So call the town office and have your meeting put on the calendar, like everyone else does.
I tried to do that actually when Chris Sterndale was here. I called and asked that exact question and he twisted himself into a pretzel to find every single way possible to say no to me. Now, I'm not, I'm totally serious about that. I mean, if, if you could have seen him, I'm sure he would have looked like the worst yoga pose possible because I, I, I brought it forth and said, "We're not asking for anything other than just so the townspeople know where to find us, just like they used to." People call, they're like, "We don't know where to find you." It would seem like the town of Nottingham could put that down on the calendar and I did ask for that. So if that's okay, then great. We can put it on the calendar.
I, is it in this building?
No.
Well, see, to me, we should have a strict web policy that is limited to activities that are government-related and this use of this building would be part of that, not everything else that's going on in the community.
Right. Because right now, that's what you have on the website is all sorts of things that are not related to the town of Nottingham in terms of the governance of the town that is on that calendar.
Yep.
So, and I mean, and I have screenshots of, you know, of things on the calendar, the Pawtucket Lake Association, they're meeting by Zoom on such and such a night, yet when I call to ask for something simple like, "Can you just put us down? We meet the same times as the Dems do, the second Thursday of the month, seven o'clock, but we just meet someplace different because this room couldn't hold us any longer," I was told no. So if you're willing to put it on the calendar, then I'm, I'm totally fine with that.
See, I'm of the opinion we should take the others off the calendar and it should be just governmental activities. Let's look into that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll, I'm going to expect an answer then from somebody about that.
Yeah, we'll look into it. We'll make sure we're compliant with, you know, the relevant, you know, election law or campaign law or what have you, and then we'll...
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have a web policy that is clear.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, third thing. This is about the, the ARPA funds. So I, I read the minutes from the last meeting and it seems, it seemed as if, well, actually, I want to back up for a minute. I wanted to know, because I couldn't find this on the website, did you ever hold a public hearing for the community for input in terms of how those ARPA funds would be spent? Did the board ever hold a public hearing? Because I, I couldn't find anything.
I think it was, wasn't it last, after we got the funds last year? It's been a while.
I went through the whole meeting, I couldn't find anything.
I remember having a meeting, I don't recall the context of it, whether it was public or, or what, but I remember having a discussion about it.
Yeah.
And that was right around the same time when I asked Chris, you know, what's the guidelines, criteria for spending this money? And he said it was very vague and according, it still is to this day, so...
There should have been a public hearing when you received the money to accept and expend it. So there was probably a public hearing last year. Doesn't mean you can't, you know, invite public input on it again.
I, I think to, to clear up any confusion, that might be the best way to go so that they...
I would really highly suggest that you guys hold a public hearing because there's a, I actually found something right here from the Department of the Treasury. It's a 44-page booklet which outlines the way in which you're supposed to spend these funds. It is vague, not as vague as, as you guys think it is, but when I read it, there were things that you approved last month that I can't see how it ever fall under ARPA fund usage. And now, of course, I'm reading it from my vantage point and the way you might be reading it obviously is very different, so I, you know, totally understand that. But for instance, the paving of Marston Street, I, I don't see how that qualified as for usage with these, for this particular fund. When you look at the four, there's four areas that you have to use it in and it would even be questionable that well, you know, the well that got put on Marston Street. But I think before you spend anything else, you ought to at least read this booklet and make sure that what's, that you understand what it is, but also invite the community because obviously, when you listen to the chief, for instance, that has, and I'm sure the fire department probably has needs, you know, what is the process at which you're spending this money? You know, just to willy-nilly, "Yeah, let's spend $30,000 to pave Marston Street and let's get a $20,000 thing to cover up the tires." And, I mean, is that really a good use of funds when we have so many needs in this community? You just have a culvert that just collapsed, according to John, that now we have to fix. You have three others that need fixing and I, I'm not sure that some of the things that you approved of last, you know, last month or last meeting fall under these guidelines and I'm not sure that it's really the best way to spend those funds when there's so many other things that are pressing in this community. One of the things that, you know, it talks about in terms of what you're allowed to do is nonprofits. What are the needs that are going to come up this, this winter with the food pantry, with the rising costs of food and gasoline and health expenses and the rest? I'm sure that Shelley is going to have more people requesting assistance than possibly we had last year. And has there been any thought given to putting money towards that to help people in this community who can't afford the, you know, taxes are going to go up again. I mean, all you do is listen to the budget. We know taxes are going to go up again and there's a lot of people in this town that aren't, that aren't going to be able to keep affording this. So I would just, I, I would really appreciate it. I think a lot of people in the community would, should have a say in how these funds get spent and so I'm really encouraging you to have a public hearing on it and listen to what the people, and really listen to these department heads about what their needs are and come up with a formula for how you really go about deciding how money like this is spent and not just, you know, excuse me, French, don't piss it away. It's, it's not an opportunity we're going to get often, so that's it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and all you do.
Hello, Tom Bukevich, Two Washington Lane. So first off, I'll just, I have some comments about budget stuff. I'm glad you guys are taking the 4% tax cap seriously. That's good to hear. I know John said that you guys aren't going to try to just move a bunch of stuff to warrant articles and stuff. I hope that's kind of the, the plan is to maybe if you have to make a little bit of cuts to get this 121,000 down. Because I think it's, it's good to remember that the tax cap is not an absolute maximum that, hey, let's spend, you know, let's go 4%, just as long as we don't go over 4%, people will be happy. It's not an allowance, right? I mean, it's not like, hey, we're giving you 4% every year, go wild with it. So just be careful of that. So I know you guys are going to be coming and bringing us a draft budget November 3rd or 10th. I just have one request with the draft budget. the draft budget. I actually may not be able to change it in the draft budget, at least with the proposed budget, is to update the budget acronyms that are used for all the different buildings in town. We're always confused about them at budget committee meetings. You got things like THOBCCOTH. I know these stand for things like town hall, old building, community center, old town hall, but I'm not sure how there's a difference between town hall, old building, old town hall, community center. I, I feel like we have to have this explained to us every year. So if you could just go through the budget and just expand these acronyms to make them a little less nebulous, that would be awesome.
I agree with that.
And then I wasn't planning on talking about this, but since the topic came up, about the dump. I called a complaint in a few weeks or a month or two ago, but I heard that it never made it to the board. So I've had bad experiences with this gentleman there. I think his name is Wayne. I've talked to John about him before. He goes out of his way to harass me when I go to the dump. Now, I don't mind confrontation, you know that. But like, this is insane. I go to the dump, he finds a reason to yell at me every time, and I pull my phone out and I try to get a video of it so I can come here and show you. But by the time the phone gets out and you get to the recording and everything, the yelling has stopped. It's not a funny video. It's not worth doing. I've started wearing a body camera when I go to the dump, a very obvious recording flashing red light body camera in the center of my chest. And since I've started doing that, Wayne generally leaves me alone. But I shouldn't have to wear a body camera to go to the dump just to throw some stuff out. That's ridiculous. This is harassment. I don't understand how this gentleman still has his job with this many complaints in town and being known as the Dump Nazi widely. Like, it's ridiculous. I understand it's hard to find people to do a job. I mean, maybe you gotta pay a few more bucks, but you can certainly find better than this. Thank you. I don't support, like, contracting it out. I like our little dump. Maybe you can find the people that worked there a few years ago.
Find the people. We may have no option.
If they still live in Nottingham or nearby, find the people that were working there three years ago and get down on your knees and just beg them to come back, because they were great. I had no problem with them for the last 10 years. They were great. Thank you.
All right. Last one, and then we're gonna go to non-public.
Roger Richards, 62 Garland Road. About this dump thing, I'm not gonna mention anything other than what you had mentioned. We need to find something different. So why don't we talk to some of the people in the town, and if they volunteer, we take it off of their taxes. Now, they're gonna be working to make their taxes lower. Instead of us paying people, asking this hand to get to this hand, ask this hand to do something. And they're gonna save money themselves.
Okay, we can't even find volunteers for the rec department, and you're asking for volunteers for the-
Yeah, but, but they're gonna get, are they gonna, do they get money off of their taxes? If we're gonna pay somebody $16 an hour, give somebody $14 an hour, and they get, they work 10 hours, 140 bucks off of their taxes. They're gonna do it once a week.
You can't do it that way. You can't do it that way by law. You can't reduce their taxes in lieu of paying. So you've got to pay them and put them on a payroll. The bigger issue is you can't volunteer unless you're certified by the state. So you have to go get certified by the DES in order to even volunteer at the transfer station.
Okay, that was, I throw that one out. But we could figure something out. Okay?
You can pay them.
Because there's a problem, and getting work everywhere seems to be a problem too. So we can hopefully figure something out. About spending money, okay? We've had a long couple of years with COVID, people not working, people had to tap into their savings, people had to refinance their house, get equity loan. Inflation's killing them, killing everybody. I don't care if you are well-to-do, you're still feeling it. So I think any spending of money that we get from the feds, the state and everything, should go back to the people. Instead of just spending it for this and that and everything. I, I remember hearing about tires, to cover tires. That money should go back to the people.
Okay, but isn't fixing the roads and the culverts going, you know, taking care of the people?
But that's where we have infrastructure bills. They, they spent trillions on it. Infrastructure. We, we need to tap into that, yes.
John had already mentioned that those are some of the areas that we're gonna be looking into.
Yes, yes. But, but the money that just, if someone says, oh, we took the money, you know, feds, we took the money in this year, and we're gonna give it to you for COVID, because you guys spent a lot of money on COVID. You did. But who spent it? We did. So it should go back to we. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, that concludes our regular business for this evening. We're gonna go into non-public session, and at the end of the non-public session, we will exit non-public for the purpose of closing the meeting.
And you may pass a couple of sets of minutes.
And, yes.
Thanks for listening.
Yep, no problem. All right, what letters are we under?
We're under, underneath, just a minute.
Just one second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll talk. We'll touch base, okay? Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, basically, they're all under A and B.
Okay.
Do you guys have to serve breakfast now?
Do we what?
Should be serving breakfast, do we?
Yeah, you would think so. We can't shut the TV off until Ben gets back and we're going to non-public.
What the fuck's he doing?
I don't know. Your mic is still on, though.
I know.
I'm gonna go get a glass of water while we're waiting.
Steve, have a good night.
Oh, I'm gonna be in Canada.
Oh, sorry.
No, I didn't know my, my wife planned a trip for us, so.
Yep, good to know, because I don't wanna surprise, but, what I have is that it's Ben and I. And one of you, one of the two, I would like to represent the board. Just welcome. But both of them, I'd like to speak as a veteran.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you for attending while you were present. Your mother liked it.
Yep. It was fun.
Your mother was a weird guy.
Oh, yeah.
Steve.
Yeah, we're talking about the veterans thing.
Yeah.
And Julia there, speaking in Canada.
What?
I'm gonna be away for the weekend.
Oh, no pressure, huh, Steve?
It's just you and I. But I write in about, hey, one of you represents the board, and both of you represent veterans.
Yeah.
And one of the people, the other people have the national.
Yes. Right.
Good. It took the bag, was it?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I, I meant to call you.
A and B. I'll take a motion for A and B.
My mic's running at 100 miles an hour.
Thank you. We should go to non-public.
With R, I don't have the thing in front of me.
RSA 91, A32, A and B.
Right, there you go. Go to non-public for RSA 91, dash, A32, A and B, right? Good?
Yep. Take a second.
Second.
All right, roll call, vote. Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
All right. Good night, Nottingham.
Good night, Nottingham.